Commissioner Hanson, can you hear me okay? Welcome everybody to the Planning Commission this evening on November 3rd, 2021. I'm Commissioner Hanson, Chair of the Planning Commission. Commissioner Musa will be joining us in a little bit this evening. Drew, before he gets here, by way of any voting or anything like that, is Commissioner Tuppo, will she step in and vote at that time?
Until he gets here, and if you're voting on items, she needs to vote.
Okay, perfect, awesome. Here we go. You ready for this? All right, to start the evening, we'll start with invocation by Commissioner Sheil. Once again, he's become our go-to on that, thank you. And I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after that. Commissioner Sheil.
And you're the go-to on pledge, right? Our Father in Heaven, as we come before the union one another this night in our Washington City Planning Commission meeting, we're thankful to be here. We're thankful for the opportunities we have to help and serve one another. We're thankful for our city and our city staff and officials. We're thankful for the opportunities we have to work together. We pray that this night we'll be cordial with one another, that we'll be able to do and say the things professionally and correctly, and that we can have unity between one another. And we pray that we'll be guided and directed in the decisions that we make. And we pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Would you all please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll look for an approval of the agenda for November 3rd, 2021. I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Sheil. I make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, November 3rd.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The approval will stand for tonight's meeting for November 3rd. Looking for item number two, an approval of the minutes from the previous meeting from October 20th. I will not be able to vote on this as I was absent. You guys have had a chance, guys and gals have had a chance to look at this. And there are no corrections. I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from October 20th.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I make a motion we approve the minutes.
This is Sheil. I second.
I've got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm Hanson, I'm abstaining. Item number three, Declaration of any abstentions or conflicts on any of the items on the agenda this evening from the Commissioners. No? Good.
This is Sheil. I live within the area of Simister Development on Washington Fields and 3500 South. I was notified via mail on this. I don't have any monetary value here, but, so I can vote, I guess.
Yep.
Just for the record, that's, I'm in that area.
All right, any others, Commissioners? If not, we'll move on to our agenda for this evening. Item number 4A, this is a final plat. It's consideration and recommendation to our City Council for the Mustang Valley Phase 2. Final plat located approximately Gold Line Drive and Mustang Valley Drive. The applicant is Gold Line Homes. And I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioner. This particular subdivision is proposing 30 units on an area covering 3.24 acres. The specific location of this subdivision is Zoned Plan Unit Development Residential. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal and the proposed final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat, which was approved back on July 8th of 2020. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Mustang Valley Phase 2 subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions seen in your report. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments for staff or the developer.
This is Commissioner Tuppo. I guess I'm trying to figure out, is there off-street parking on this? Because the roads are so skinny.
There, this is the residential area, there's no...
Yeah, there's guest parking.
Sorry, I'm on the wrong plot of mine. Yeah, Drew's highlighting it right there. And if I remember correctly, on the south end, Fire Chief asked him to put no parking signs up along that.
That sounds correct. The parking signs will let that in.
Okay, great, thank you.
Eldon, would you mind repeating what was just said, just for the notes, so Kathy can get it in there?
Yes, there will be no parking signs, placards placed on the south end of the development. And then there is parking on the north end of Billion Drive.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? And if there are no further questions, I'll look for a motion on item 4A.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I make a motion to approve the final plat for Mustang Valley Phase 2, located at Gold Line Drive and Mustang Drive with the three findings and five conditions, and pass it on to City Council for consideration.
This is Sheil. I second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Sheil. We'll go to individual voting. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. The motion passes. Item 4A, we'll send that to City Council with a recommendation for approval. I apologize, at the beginning of the meeting, I forgot to recognize one of our councilmen here. Mr. Staley, thank you for attending this evening, we appreciate it. We'll move to item number 4B, consideration and recommendation to City Council for the Heritage Place Phase 1 Final Plat located approximately northeast of Heritage Fields Drive and 2000 South. The applicant is Nice &amp; Fields LLC. I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioners. This particular subdivision is proposing 13 lots on an area covering 3.95 acres. The specific location of this subdivision is Zoned Plan Unit Development Residential. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal and the proposed final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat, which was approved back on August 11th of 2021. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Heritage Place Phase 1 subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions seen in your report. And we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions you might have for Eldon. The only question I have, Eldon, is Commissioner Hanson, is, there's probably a good reason that these are split into two different items. Could you tell us why that is?
Two separate phases.
Is that all it is?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, if there's no questions for staff, if you have any, we can wait a little bit. If there are no questions, we can, I'll look for a motion.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I make a motion we approve the final plat for Heritage Place Phase 1 subdivision located approximately Heritage Fields Drive and 2000 South with the three findings and the five conditions. This is Anderson. I second.
I have a first by Commissioner Bullock. I have a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Item number 4B passes. We'll send that to City Council as a recommendation for approval. Moving along to item number 4C, this is in the same area. It's consideration and recommendation to the City Council for Heritage Place, again, Phase 2. Final plat located approximately northeast of Heritage Fields Drive and 200 South. The applicant is Nice &amp; Field LLC. Turn the time over to Eldon.
Thank you, Commissioners. This, yeah, buts the one you just voted on, and is proposing 22 lots on an area covering 6.31 acres. This is also Zoned Plan Unit Development Residential. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal and the proposed final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat, which was approved back on August 11th of 2021. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the final plat for Heritage Place Phase 2 subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. And we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, Commissioners, I don't want to assume there aren't any comments or questions on this, but if there are, please ask. If there are not, I'll look for a motion to approve or recommend for approval the second phase of Heritage Place.
This is Sheil. I recommend that we approve this final plat for the Heritage Place Phase 2 subdivision to the, and pass it on to the City Council based on the three findings and five conditions, six, five conditions.
This is Tuppo, Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Sheil. I have a second by Commissioner Tuppo. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheil?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Commissioner Tuppo?
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Hanson. I'm an item, I'm an aye as well. Item number 4A, I'm sorry, 4C passes unanimously, and we'll send that to City Council with a recommendation for approval as well. We'll move along to item number 4D. This is consideration and recommendation to the City Council for Sunrise Valley Industrial Phase 1, the final plat located approximately west of Landfield Road. The applicant is Midland LLC, Plum Holdings SG LLC. And I'll turn the time over to Eldon for his staff report.
Thanks, Commissioners. This particular subdivision is proposing 32 lots on an area covering 35.79 acres. Specific location of the subdivision is Zoned Heavy Industrial, the I2. Staff has reviewed this requested proposal and the proposed final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat, which is approved back on October 27th of this year. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Sunrise Valley Industrial Park Phase 1 subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions seen in your report. And we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open the floor at this time.
This is Sheil. I can't remember when it came, but is there fencing required around this?
There is a chain link fence to the east. But no, there's, there's no block, blocking going around it.
No block?
Correct.
I'll jump in just here. The fencing is right. It's required, is right where my cursor is. See that? It's these solid lines with the squares. That fencing's required because that's right at the edge of the hillside, and the Hillside Committee wanted this fencing put in place as kind of the line, so to speak. So everything on this side, they're okay with, but nothing out here right now. So, and that's right at that, that line. I guess there's a elevation change somewhat there too, and that's what you're remembering back, way back when we started this, was that that was required, so.
Drew, this is Commissioner Bullock. What is the overlay, right there where it says the overlay zone, the hillside?
Yeah, that's where the line on the map shows. But this is where the Hillside Committee wanted them to say nothing, no building on where the, you know, where the chain link fence.
They can, they can actually cut it back and all the way up to the chain link fence.
Yeah, that's right. But they can't, the chain link has to go in and nothing changes on, on the one side, and everything's okay on the other side.
Okay, I'm just curious about the overlay zone.
Yeah.
So is the developer taking that all down then? Where?
Well, I, I think it's flat enough naturally out there, and that's why when we went out, if you go on site, as I mean, it's been a while since I was out there with them, is what happens on that case. So, you know, you don't have this great slopage between the, you know, the dashed line of the, the area versus the fence line. So they just said, here's where we don't want any disturbance from the fence line over.
Which is Phase 2, which, that's not what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Are you just, are these both separated, two?
Yeah, I think so. I think we're just talking.
If you're on one, then yeah. So you're fine in number one?
Yeah.
Commissioner, this is Commissioner Anderson. I make a motion to approve the final plat for the Sunrise Valley Industrial Phase 1 subdivision located at Lambville Road and Country Way. And pass it on to City Council for consideration based on the three findings and five conditions.
This is Sheil. I second.
Got a first by Commissioner, a motion by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Sheil. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Item number 4D, we'll send to City Council with our recommendation for approval, as outlined. Item number 4E, this is also consideration and recommendation to the City Council for the Commerce Hospitality Center. It's a final plat. It's located approximately 954 North Commerce Boulevard. The applicant is Dean Terry Investments. Probably LLC. I'll turn the time over to Eldon for staff report.
Thanks, Commissioners. This subdivision is proposing nine lots on an area covering 12.92 acres. Specific location of the subdivision is Zoned C2. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal and the final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat, which was approved back on September 22nd of this year. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Commerce Hospitality Center subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions in your report. And we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions. Almost feel like we have somewhere to be tonight. We're out of here. We've already through this. I don't have any questions.
This is Sheil. I would, I would recommend that the Planning Commission recommend for approval of the final plat for the Commerce Hospitality Center subdivision. Recommend it to the City Council to approve this based on the three findings and the five conditions.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Sheil. I've got a second by Commissioner Bullock. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Item 4E passes unanimously, and we'll send that to City Council with the same, with a recommendation for approval. Item number 4F, this is consideration and recommendation to the City Council for the final plat on the Oak Grove locate, on, the Oak Grove Final Plat located approximately 2200 South, 240 West. The applicant is Capital V LLC. I'll turn the time over to Eldon for staff report.
Thanks, Commissioners. This subdivision is proposing eight lots on an area covering 7.29 acres. The specific location is Zoned Single Family Residential, 15,000 square foot minimum. Staff has reviewed the requested proposal and the proposed final plat conforms to the approved preliminary plat, which was approved back on November 12th of 2020. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the final plat for the Oak Grove subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right, Commissioners, I'll open the floor. Any questions for staff?
Was, was there any notes for, wasn't there secondary water capture in their pipes or something on this? Was that supposed to be in the condition or anything? Is this the one?
Is the engineer here? I'd like him to address this.
They've moved it? Oh.
I think you guys are on the wrong one.
I, I, I don't have an answer for you on that, Commissioner Sheil.
Well, I just thought it was unique. I, I, oh, okay.
Yeah, the one I think you're, is to the west of this, that they had this.
Oh.
The unique proposed LED in the backyards, etc. That's on the other side of 240 West, the one you're remembering.
Sorry.
Commissioners, if there are no other questions, I'll look for a motion on this item.
This is Sheil. I'll make a motion that we, as a Planning Commission, recommend for approval from the City Council, the final plat for Oak Grove subdivision at, with the three findings and five conditions.
This is Commissioner Tuppo. I second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Sheil. I've got a second by Commissioner Tuppo. Individual voting, Anderson?
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Item number 4F passes unanimously. We will recommend, we'll pass that along to the City Council with a recommendation for approval. The public hearings, here we go. This is what everybody came for. Get your money's worth. Here it comes. Item number 5A, the public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for the Queens Ridge Phase 2 through 5 preliminary plat located approximately Washington Fields Road and 3500 South. The applicant is Steven Simister. I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thanks, Commissioners. This, these, this subdivision, this proposal here, are proposing 86 lots on an area covering 40.19 acres. The zoning designation at this location was recently rezoned to include single-family residential 12,000 square foot minimum and single-family residential 15,000 square foot minimum lot sizes. The surrounding zoning is R115 and R110 to the north and east. R112 and RA half to the south and R112 to the west. The proposed subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. The request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends approval with conditions of the preliminary plat as outlined. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Queens Ridge Phases 2 through 5 subdivision to the City Council based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as seen in your reports. I would just like to note the canal easement. They are proposing a 10-foot wide trail for their portion through that easement as well. Just want to make you aware of that. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
All right, Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions that you might have.
This is Commissioner Tuppo. Where, what is considered the second access to meet the fire code? Which one, Camino? Oh, okay. Okay, got it, thank you.
They actually have three of them because they're tying on the other subdivisions. Three extra.
This is Commissioner Hanson. Eldon, with, with regards to what you've mentioned about the canal easement, it'll just stay consistent to what's there, correct?
Correct.
Won't look anything different coming through there?
Correct.
Okay.
50-foot easement.
All right.
This is Sheil. Is it fenced, that canal? Is it fenced off?
Well, right now, no, because it's not built yet, but some of the backyards have fencing in them as part of these existing subdivisions. That's the only parcel. People will probably be putting their block walls on there.
Is it an active canal?
Yes.
Yeah, it's underground.
It's, yeah, it's piped.
Okay.
It's underground.
Oh, okay.
It's the one that runs.
Well, then, don't need a fence.
No, so I say, people will just...
Okay. Trail's gonna be right on top of the pipe?
So nobody's walking in backyards. I'm sure each one of them will fence the block wall their properties off, so.
I lived there, but I never walked there.
Not yet.
Now you might.
This is Commissioner Anderson. Are we, are we requiring that they build these retaining walls as part of the pads? Like up front?
Our code requires anything over 24 or 33 feet? I can't remember. It's, they have to put them in. The developer puts them in, not the builder. Now, if there's other ones under that, that people want to put theirs on in, then they, they, they'll do that as a builder or a homeowner.
At, at what point do we make sure they do that? Again, like right now, most people are doing it, but like, you saw how many lots got left stranded after the recession, that none of these retaining walls got put in all over the place.
That's why we changed our code and started doing that. So if you come and look at some of the other subdivisions now, you know, we...
Yeah, now they're going in.
Yeah.
So I guess this is my, my question, maybe for the engineer, but like a lot 510. So because those lots don't line up with the ones in the back, I mean, you got a 16-foot retaining wall, double stacked wall, but there's a section there where it's, you know, it's 19, almost 20 feet at the back of 511. Is the engineer here somewhere? No? Nobody answer questions? Steven, I guess? You can, you can answer for Brandy.
Steven, could you please state your name for the record, so Kathy can put that?
I'm Steven Simister, applicant. So I, I actually don't have firsthand knowledge on the design of that wall. You're talking behind 510 and on the north side?
So like between, between five, you know, say, between 510 and 507, you got 16 feet of, of, you know, a double stacked, two-tiered, eight, eight-foot wall for 16-foot total. But in that corner there, where you got 511 overlaps onto 507, you know, you're gonna be like 19 feet, which is gonna require a different design. You may wanna, I'm pretty sure Brandy probably only got a 16-foot design on that.
I see.
You're gonna have to have a new design for that one.
Yeah, I haven't seen what Brandy put together on that at this, at this point.
You'll just need a different design from AGC. I'm just saying, there's some, and that's not the only place. There's quite a few places here where you've got these weird corners where you're gonna have a third tier, or you're gonna have a really tall dill, and you're gonna need a different wall design for that. Because if they go and they start building with your, your, your GeoGrid with your 16-foot wall design, you know, then you get to that corner and it's, it's, it's gonna fail because it's not gonna be big enough. Like, for example, in that corner, you'd need 20 feet of GeoGrid. But if you use their design they've got, you'll only have 16-foot of GeoGrid.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Steven, this is Commissioner Hanson. What's your kind of estimated timeframe for this build out on this? Do you have one? Just as market dictates or?
Yeah, obviously market dictating, but we, we do plan to start essentially the, the first two streets right away. And that would be just north of the existing subdivision that we did right there. So I would say that that's very reasonable, that we would accomplish that in 2022, next year. And then probably the following year, the other two phases. That would be the longest, in my opinion, that it would be, but we do plan to get started right away.
Okay.
So we're kind of splitting up into, I think, probably four phases as far as grading goes.
Cool, thanks. I don't have anything else. Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments for staff or the applicant?
This is Commissioner Bullock. Are we, are you gonna move the Washington Fields Road first? Is that gonna be in the first phase so that that road's stretched all the way from there to Lost Ridge?
Yeah, I believe I remember seeing that we do take the first phase all the way to that entrance. Oh.
No, I'm talking.
Not to Lost Ridge, I'm sorry.
It won't, your first phase won't go all the way to Lost Ridge?
No.
So we're gonna have a mess in that road again when we get to there because you're not gonna finish it all the way. You're not gonna just finish the road.
Yeah, so the first phase, we would, we'd basically, those first four lots, we would put in there and go to that entrance. And then we would, you know, the second phase, we would, we would finish that up to Lost Ridge.
Is there any way that we can finish the road all the way through and then move on to the rest of them? In your phases, with phase one, just make sure that you get the road. Instead of starting so we don't have construction on the first little bit and then a year later, the last little bit, why can't we just do the whole roadway all the way up? Because you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to widen the Washington Fields Road, correct?
Yeah, and that would all happen.
At the same time, we're not gonna do just to the intersection and then go again, right?
Yeah, it would all happen within the year's time. Is that what you're asking? All, all of next year?
Well, I just, whenever you start it, I just don't wanna, I would prefer to see the roads start and not just go up to those four lots, the Washington Fields Road. Just push it all the way while you're there, just finish the other four lots and the retention basin. I mean, it's just, that way it's not building it and I'm building it.
He's basically asking to put lots 301, 401, 402 in this, in, in phase one.
I, I, I don't care if the lots go in phase one, but just get the road done up through it. Because you have to put the road in anyway. You might as well. If you're starting, what's another four and a half lots? That's, that's my thing because everybody's complaining that the roads go in and out, in and out down the Fields Road. So let's, if we're gonna start this, let's just make sure we do it all the way. Do it one time. I mean, you obviously don't have to do the, the lots or sell them, or that's up to you, but if we're gonna do that, I think we should make sure we push that road all the way through in phase one. That's, that's my opinion on it.
This Commissioner Hanson, does the detention pond have to be finished in lot, or phase one anyway, Drew?
If it's gonna collect water, it would have to. I'm not sure if that's part, we don't know the design yet. We're still in preliminary, so.
Okay.
But generally, yeah, they'd have to at least have the pipes running there and everything, so.
Okay. Miss Commissioner Hanson, I agree. Commissioner Bullock, I think that's good.
Yeah.
We're kind of all nodding our heads. Steven, what do you think?
Yeah, we would be open to.
You understand why, right? I mean, I think any, any less of a problem on Washington Fields Road, the better. So we can get it all done in one shot. That would be helpful to the community for sure. I think that's what we're saying.
Yeah, we would be agreeable.
All we can do is make a motion to that effect.
Yeah.
Steven, this is Commissioner Anderson. Another question. So there's an existing detention basin between right up, just north of lot 501. And are you gonna have, are you gonna put up like a wall, like block wall or anything between 501 and that? I mean, right now, it's just got like some chain link fence and a bunch of weeds around it.
Oh, uh, let's see. Is that, is that that deten, is that that, is that up top?
It's the existing detention basin for Chaparral Ridge. But it's just like, it's basically, that collects it for all of High Chaparral and Chaparral Ridge. And once a year or twice a year or whatever it is, it pretty much fills up with mud and weeds and everything else. And then the various HOAs get together and spend a bunch of money and dig it out and but it's just kind of, you know, surrounded by a chain link fence and a bunch of weeds and people that live around it aren't very happy, so.
It's right behind that walkway, right, that we would be putting through there?
It's, it's right between 501 and 92.
Okay.
It's that existing detention basin.
Yeah, so we, we plan to continue the, the same like CCNRs that we had in the phase that we built. We did put in there that block walls are required upon building and that that would be shared between homeowners. So in, any lots that we were not building ourself, we do require that in the CCNRs. So keep it uniform and so that everything is walled in.
Is, and I don't know, it doesn't, I can't see. Drew, do you know, does that, does that storm, does that detention basin stretch out to his new detention basin out of Washington Fields? Or is it just dead end right there?
I mean, are the, this existing one and the other one tied together?
Dead end there, or is it tying in and going further down?
I doubt they're tied together. I don't think it was engineered that way.
Sort of dead ends there?
Yeah, this one. I, I think this ties in. John, do you know if there's the storm water system right there or not? Is your map showing that or not? Okay. It's probably, so is this more like a retention or where would this go, I wonder? We'll have to. Even though it's not part of this development, it's part of those.
I don't think it goes anywhere. I'm just saying it just because you'll end up having an issue, even though it's not your community, you'll have an issue with the people that build a home there. They'll be complaining about the weeds and the, then they'll say there's mosquitoes. If there is, I don't know, but people do say there are mosquitoes there, so. Anyway.
Yeah, I think there was the same problem just to the south there, right? When we tied the storm drain in on the first phase, I think there was the same kind of scenario.
It exits out of there.
Does it tie with this one to the south at all?
I guess we need to open to public.
Yeah, Steven, thank you. This is a public hearing at this time. I'm going to open it up for public comment. If there's anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak or have a question on this, or speak on this particular item, please come forward and state your name for the record. Looks like there is nobody that would like to come at this time, so I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This Shiel, I propose we close the public hearing.
Commissioner Tupoe, I second that.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. At this time, I'll open the floor back up for any additional questions or comments that the commissioners might have. I'll start by saying I, I am definitely in favor somehow of Commissioner Bullock's idea of having anything facing the, the road on Washington Fields Road being extended in phase one and completed to where we only have to deal with it the one time. I think that's a really good recommendation. So I back that. Yeah?
Yeah.
Add it as a condition.
Go ahead. This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Queens Ridge Phase two through five subdivision located approximately Washington Fields Road and 3500 South. Send it on to city council for consideration with the two findings and the 12 standard conditions plus the 13th condition that they, they update and get a new rockery wall design up to 20 feet to take into consideration the areas that are taller than the 16-foot in their design. And also a condition 14 that all of Washington Fields Road is improved in phase one at the start of the project.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I'll second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. I've got a second by Commissioner Bullock. Individual voting Anderson.
Aye.
Shiel.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Tupoe.
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. Item number five A passes unanimously. We'll send that as a recommendation to city council with the additional recommendations from the commission. Item number six A is also a conditional use permit and it's also a public hearing for item C, I'm sorry, excuse me, for a conditional use permit, C dash 21 dash 12 for a commercial site plan approval located at approximately 225 East Buena Vista Boulevard. The applicant is Ken Menlove. I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioners. As stated, the applicant's requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow for storage unit in the complex facility at the stated address. The new storage unit facility will be located at again approximately the 225 East Buena Vista Boulevard. The zoning for this particular site is C2. Storage unit facilities in the commercial zones require conditional use permit approval. Now, they are permitted use under the CUP. So just to make that understand. The proposed building is showing indoor, which will be controlled conditioned storage units. And then there will be several outdoor uncond, unconditioned storage units as well. They're the ones with the roll-up doors you see down here on the bottom elevation. It's kind of hard, but where my little cursor's going, those are the roll-ups just for the outdoor. The rest of it'll all be indoor. The overall majority will be indoor. It's stated there will be approximately 880 units in a variety of sizes ranging from five by five on the small end up to 10 by 30 on the large end with several sizes in between. The proposed new indoor/outdoor storage structure will need to be built in accordance with the adopted building and fire codes of the city. Staffs reviewed the proposed project and finds that it meets the standards as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff would like to recommend that the planning commission approve C dash 21 dash 12 allowing for the onsite. Now, there is no onsite caretaker. Sorry, that was from my previous storage unit, but just for the, for the Bear River storage units as you see in your, your exhibits and along with those conditions. And I would just like to go through and show you before we open it for discussion, again, these are the elevations. And I'll just kind of scroll down and kind of zoom in. The south elevations would of course be the ones that, that are on the Buena Vista street line. That's on the south. West elevations are on the street that you turn down. I think it's Warm Springs Drive, if I remember right.
Correct.
The east elevations, of course, are gonna be coming in from, you won't see much of that. The north elevations are on that existing Gale Way. But just to kind of hop down in. This is kind of the configuration, so there'll be a lot of, all these pathways are indoor down hallways, etc. You'll have the entrance where the main office is over here off of Warm Springs Drive and Gale Way corner somewhat. And this is also the project that had, that you discussed on your August, I think, 18th meeting about this possible sign billboard being moved. And so you wanted to wait till you saw this project on your final decision. So they're keeping it, you know, pushing the sign till they hit the, the boundaries of the 20-foot setback off of Buena Vista and the 20-foot setback off of Gale Way. I kind of did a rough measurement on my aerial scale. They'll be moving the sign roughly east, northeast a little bit, roughly 100 feet. And then it goes from being around 75 feet from Gale Way to they're gonna move it up about half that distance closer to Gale Way when that sign ends up in this corner area that you see. So that, the billboard will not be enlarged or any way. They'll just basically relocate it at the place that you see here. Moving on. This will be kind of from the top in the landscape area with the trees, the finish of the gravel, etc. From again, up above that you'll, you'll see here. And then this just shows specifically the, there will be detention around that corner in the landscape with the crushed rock, the trees being a landscape. There is a block wall which is required. And you can see it right here at the base. I'm just following my cursor, that I-beam looking thing. That dark line will be a solid block wall. And then out to the exit and secondary fence here. And then there will be landscaping between that block wall and Gale Way. And so that's kind of the project. It's three-story. But still at the 35-foot maximum height on that is what they put if you looked on your elevation, so. And that's at the high end. You notice there's a change in elevation if we head back to those elevations, you'll.
Can you stop at the Gale Way elevation?
Well, that's the Gale Way elevation right there. And then noting the six-foot wall, six-foot block wall will be there as well in between. But this is if I'm standing inside that block wall, this is what I'm, I'm kind of looking at, so.
So it doesn't look like the block wall runs all the way to the end? Oh, I guess we're not, we won't see the block wall. You're right.
Yeah, you don't see it. That, yeah, that's just, that number seven's retaining wall.
No outside storage, right?
No, there is. These, these are roll-up doors right here. Those are the out, the outside. So really, they're under the building, but technically you get to them from outside.
Right, right, that's what I'm.
So, yeah, no, but there are no like the standard
Yeah.
storage units we see with the, the block walls, which is roll-up doors and roofs everywhere. That's not in this project at all. This is all under this one building.
Did you see that? Is that, this is Commissioner Hanson, that, is that an exit only up there by Gale Way? Did I hear that correctly?
I will, I'm gonna have to defer on that one and ask the representative if they're here to on this auto, you know, automatic gate. I think it, I don't know if it's an entrance or an exit or both or a combo. So we'll ask the applicant to address that if we could.
Is he here or do we?
Uh, we, yeah, I know we have, and one of the applicants is online, which he's watching, you know, YouTube or, and he is hopefully there.
Let's make a note of it and then we'll add some additional questions and hear from the applicant.
I was hoping that John might say, because I know they've talked about it and I just wanted, so go ahead. We'll hear it from the Public Works on the access management.
Yeah, in our discussions with the developer and engineers on this, the entryway off of Warm Springs would be all movements. And then the one off of Buena Vista would be right only, right in, right out.
So it is an entrance exit auto with a gate, a coded key?
Yep.
I mean, okay. So it's an entrance exit, right in.
So.
But right in, right out only.
One of my questions is gonna be if somebody's pulling a trailer and they're coming into that, I don't know how much room is there, but is that gonna cause any kind of an issue on Buena Vista Boulevard? There's probably a lane to turn in there, so.
Yeah, no, we asked them to actually move the gate back. It's about 70 feet.
Okay.
Well, so you're gonna put the gate farther in?
Yeah, the, the one picture has it shown for, kind of forward and stuff, but another one.
Let me see if I can find your.
But it has been addressed then, John, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this one, this one shows the gate farther back.
They're both back about 70 to 75 feet from the roadway.
Okay.
Just so that we have stacking off the roadway. We don't want anything on Buena Vista specifically.
Okay.
Those are parking stalls, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Is that enough room for somebody with a trailer to turn in there once they get into that gate? Seems like it's tight. I mean, I'm sure somebody's studied that, but whatever. They want to stack up and it's the only car in there, that's fine. I just didn't want to affect Buena Vista Boulevard.
Well, it looks like it's 30-foot wide. And I'm not trying to be mean, but if you can't pull the truck with a trailer in a 30-foot wide opening, you probably shouldn't be driving a truck with a trailer on it.
You should see me try it. I'd probably get stuck in there.
Oh, I, I knew that's where I was heading with that, Commissioner, because, you know.
Yeah.
So in other words, your trailer's for sale now?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, good. Those are parking.
So that's, there are no doors there, no overhead doors?
No.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Tupoe, where, where is the block wall supposed to be located? There's, there's the drawing with all of the landscaping, is it on, which side of the landscaping is it located?
This dark line, I'm, I, this is not the best one to do it, the Tupoe one has way too many lines on it. This is kind of your, your elevator, so between, you know, this landscaped area and the asphalt parking, that's a block wall right there separating the two. If you follow my I-beam cursor right there, that's just one place to show it and all. And you can see the privacy wall right here labeled, this hard black line right here, again, between the trees and this open, that's where the block wall is.
Does it end where the two little parking spaces are to the south?
Well, it's probably because this picture should be updated, it'll probably end back here where we just talked about where the gate is and then it will also end right here with the other gate that goes in into the complex right there, that's where the solid block wall will be.
Hi, hey Eldon.
No, it's not Eldon, don't offend me like that, I'm just kidding, it's Drew.
Drew, hey Drew, this is Ken Menlove, how you doing?
Fine.
Ken Menlove?
Yes.
Hey, just clarifying on the privacy fence or on the block wall. We're, we, we are okay with wherever you want to put it, but on the civil plans, it shows the privacy fence or block wall up behind the curb and gutter on Gale Way and not, not where you're saying on the landscaping plan, if you look at note 14.
Ken, I'll stop you right there, that's a no-go.
Good, I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, you're required to have a minimum of 10 feet of, of landscaping strip off the back of the curb or the sidewalk and, you know, on the street before you would put a privacy, so it's got to be a minimum of 10 feet back, but you're showing it, I think at 20 and, and I, I think we're fine either way with that, it's got to have a minimum of 10 feet.
Okay, and I'm okay, I'm okay with wherever you guys want to put it, I was just saying there's a discrepancy there on the plans, so we're okay with that, yes.
Commissioners, any other questions? Actually, any other questions, I'm not going to open up to a public comment yet, because I think that we should have some questions on the sign. That's what, that was kind of the big controversy or issue that we had last meeting about this was the sign. And I just want to hear your thoughts about it, if there's any questions for staff about replacement of the sign, um, where it's at in this particular project now that they've moved it.
Yeah, I see that would be a problematic location, is there any way that, like if this was going to happen, that it would be located closer to Buena Vista and, uh, in the other corner and Warm Springs Drive?
Nine.
From there?
No.
Yeah, that's practically in people's, that's in someone's backyard, it's a huge sign.
Drew, this is Commissioner Anderson, is that a drainage basin around the
Yes.
The bottom there?
Yeah, that L shape is a detention landscaped area with.
So do we know how much room they need for that sign, how much area? But let's say we were to say it's better used in there, how much would they have to slide the thing up to be able to? Because you'd have to have a, a corner of that detention basin basically not be detention basin enough to put the sign there on that corner. We know how.
I, I think we're, just my professional and personal opinion, you're cutting your nose off in spite of your face by putting the sign in that corner. If, once you, if you move that bill and you put the sign there and when it's all said and done, you're going to go, what did I do? I, I'm just, that's, that's more than my two cents worth, but that sign on that corner, moving it that direction, you'll come back and go, oh no, I shouldn't have done that. We'll open it up in a minute, you guys just hold tight, you're going to have your moments.
Yeah, I'll definitely open this up for any comment you want to make and we'll entertain that for sure, uh, so.
Now again, I was worried because at first we talked about it was going to get, tried to push way back into that triangle.
Yeah.
You know, which would be even worse. So, I mean, I, I get everybody's, there's no win, it's, it's only a lose no matter, you know, on wherever we try because the sign, once it's there, I mean, it's where it is right now, people see it. I mean, you're, you're either used to it and it's right where it is, moving at that distance, yeah, it may bring it, but it's, it's still going to be a sign, it's the same size, it's big, but it's already there. It's not like it's a new one, you know, thank goodness, um, so that's.
I thought, this is Commissioner Hanson, when I left this project the last time, I was under the impression that there was going to be an attempt to build around the sign that's currently there and that's what I was hoping to see and then it wouldn't be, in my mind, it's like, there's a sign there and there's still a sign there and there's a project now that goes around it.
I will share with you on that, you're talking two different, the guys who have the contract on the sign versus the developer, so the, the sign guy was here at your last meeting because it's their sign to move and that's why I think, because I don't think they want, you know, it's like anybody else, if I, I don't want to move the sign if I don't have to move the sign, but, you know, so now the property owner knows he has that contract and has to keep with it and they're trying to utilize their property the best. And they're, they're saying they want the sign to move, but the sign guy says, I just don't leave it there, then I don't have to, because I think it's going to be at, at the sign guy's expense, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Because he still gets to keep his contract, so that, I'm just clarifying that for you, so you know where, it, it's two different kind of folks that we're, we're talking the sign people and then the property owner.
Drew, this is Commissioner Bullock, where is the sign now in this? Can you show me on there?
It's, it's hard because they didn't show existing, but if, if it's, if I'm going to try to write about where my cursor may be, right there.
Okay.
I, I, that's rough, I've looked this over and, you know, the, the other one, because there's a fire hydrant in the street and I saw, that's how I could use it without the building there. But I'm guessing with, you know, just, and I'm probably within 10, 15 feet, but it's about where the cursor is now, it's going to, it's basically 100 feet from where they're showing it. If you took it on that angle, went 100 feet down this way, and then it drops 35 feet, you know, down this way, the, the base of it, I'm talking, not, you know, and everything's relative to the base part of the pole, so.
Well, put your cursor where it's, you think it's going to go.
Well, we already know where it's, it's that rectangle up there. You're, I'll put my cursor right now, heck, you, you guys are forcing me to go to my drawing till I know you are.
So it currently sits about between the fourth and the fifth house in from the east.
Unfortunately, the houses aren't showing on here, I wish.
No.
Hey, hey Drew.
Yeah.
Go to the site utility plan on C, go to sheet C 4.0 if you have that and it shows the location of the existing sign.
Okay, hold on.
On sheet, C 4.0. Yeah. Right?
Wait, it's four point, C 4.0?
Yes.
I gotta go down then.
4.01.
Nope. It's a civil drawing, we don't have it.
You might have it out of order, keep going up. Going up. Or it's not in the plans.
Yeah, it's, like I say, I didn't remember, I looked through them briefly and didn't see that, you know, again, we're not going to put the civils in our conditional use permit, but.
It's, so the existing sign, the existing sign is right at the edge of the proposed building, it's where the sidewalk is there. So it's not as far down as you think it is, it's right, if you go back to your site plan, it's right where the sidewalk is now proposed. Or see it on Google map, so right there, it's right where your cursor is, if you go, move your cursor up towards the sign. Towards the parking stalls, it's right where those parking stalls is now.
Right there?
Right there.
I.
Right there, yep. That's where it's on the survey and on the civil and the new site utility plan, yeah, that's where they're showing it. Yep.
Okay, unless that fire hydrant's in the wrong place, let me just show you what I was.
And it's right, and it shows the existing fire hydrant on that plan as well, and it's right in line with it, yeah.
That's what I say, if the fire hydrant's in the right place.
Yep, that's where there's, it, it, it's like you said Drew, it's right in line with the fire hydrant on that sheet. Yep.
See, the fire hydrant's where my arrow is. So yeah, I guess if you're taking it at the angle of the sign, but I'm trying to keep in a relationship to this way as well.
You're talking about the fire hydrant in, on Buena Vista, right?
No, no, I'm talking about the fire hydrant up on Gale Way right here where my arrow is. So, because I can't see a fire hydrant, let me bring my.
It's, they, it lines up, it's the same, yeah, it's the exact same, yeah, we're looking at it too, so, yeah.
Yeah, because I don't have a fire, yeah, you guys are thinking the wrong road, so Gale Way's the fire hydrant.
Moving about. Yeah, it's on the, it's on that same sheet, 4.01.
I'm just going to show you on here where I think the proposal is rough, roughly.
They're moving it about 50 feet. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the distance of the two of them right there.
Yeah, it's about, on our plans, about 50 feet, they're moving it, so. All right, yeah, 20, 20, yeah, 50 feet.
So, does that help you, that's where the difference is roughly, that's, you know, taking the building off, this is where the sign will will move and so. Say with Gale Way being about a 40 foot wide road and I take that, it's, I still say it's like 100 feet, you know, from center post to center of the post and then this is about off Gale Way, I measured roughly at 75 to 80 feet and it's going to put it at about 35 to 40 feet off of Gale Way over here roughly, plus or minus five feet because I'm.
What's the, what's the height of the?
Well, it has to be 20, 20 feet off of the edge of Gale Way because it's a 20 foot setback.
Yeah. Well, plus the sign, how wide, how long's the sign?
The sign, the length of it, about 10, 20, 30, about maybe 35 feet, 40 feet.
I think it's going to be close to 50 because billboards are usually 48 feet, so I'm going to take 24 and 20, so it's going to be.
Hey Drew. But.
Yeah.
Drew, my name's Braden Saunders, I'm, I'm, I'm with the sign company, I'm happy to answer any question, yeah, sorry, it took me a second to to find the link, uh, for the Google meet, but, um, the, the sign is currently a 14 by 48.
Okay, so that means halfway point, you put them so they don't tilt, right, so at 24, I'm just teasing with you.
Yeah, that's where, that's where the pole will be.
Yeah.
Um, and if you guys, uh, right.
You're basically going to be 40 feet off of the back of Gale Way to the post as the proposal is now. And right now, as I did a measurement earlier, it, it's about 75 feet, so it's going to, you know, it's moving northward 30 feet and then at an angle 100 feet. Just for perspective, I'm just.
Braden, if you and Kim would both stay on the phone, I'm sure you will, this is Commissioner Hanson, the Chair of the Commission, I'm going to open this up for a public hearing, there's people here that would like to ask some questions and express their feelings about this particular item, at this time I'm going to open the public hearing, if those of you who like to come up, please speak your name clearly into the microphone and for the record, and if you could, please keep your comments to three minutes or less, thank you.
Before you start, I want to ask one question, how high is the building at that point of the current location where the sign is?
The building will be about 20, the building will be about 24 feet at that end, so at the low end, it's about 34 feet. But at that high end, yeah, right there, it's about 24 feet, so it's not the full 35 feet, it's only two-story.
Thank you.
How are yours, how are you?
I'm fine, not really, I see what you're doing and it scares me.
What you should do is hold on to both sides of the podium when you're talking, see, it's all worn right there.
State your name and rank.
My name is Marilyn McClellan and I am the President of the Warm Springs HOA, which is right behind what you're talking about. I haven't heard any mention that Gale Way is a private road. Nobody ever said anything, that's, but it's a private road. If you all want to open it up and repave it for us as a city, we'd love to have that, but we've got to have some easement there. Gale Way, the driveways, his driveway, her driveway are like this and we've got people with pickups and that's a lot of fun. If we had some kind of easement between, uh, the corner Gale Way, just so we could park a little bit over, that'd be great. I think where you want to put the sign stinks, I'm sorry, um, Jim Pollack lives up there and that sign's going to be right in front of his house and he's going to have a fit. That sign is big enough, I live on Arrowweed on the other side and I see it. I see it at night, it's lit up, that's how big it is, I can see it over on the other side. So it's not a little sign. And, um, I've watched that sign many times laying on my couch and there. We just need some confirmation that you're going to be aware of our private road there, that we have to take care of. And if we have an easement somehow to help us park a little bit, that much room would be great and things. This is Todd Alford, he's my Vice President and he lives at the end of, of Gale Way. And the Gonzalez's are here and they live in the middle of there, so she has some questions about it, but mainly, could we address that that is a private road there?
Absolutely, thanks Marilyn.
Thank you.
All right, Todd, hold on to both sides of the podium.
I'm Todd Alford, I live at, uh, 149 East Gale Way, uh, I didn't hear the site, at the height of the block wall that's being put in, was that mentioned?
68.
10 feet?
Six.
6 feet? Okay. Well, and how far off, it's got to have an easement of 10, so it's got to be back off that Gale Way by 10 feet.
It's a minimum of 10, they've got to propose at 20 feet off the road right now.
Okay, uh, the only thing that I ask is the, maybe, okay, who's going to be taking care of the leaves that are going to be on the trees there? Because there's a block wall there, it's going to be falling on our side, some of it, at least 50% probably, so I would suggest that maybe cut back some of the trees and allow us to, uh, put some parking there on Gale Way for the, some of the homes that are there. Because we get guests that come Thanksgiving, Christmas and.
But you do know that's private property though, right, I mean, I just, I know you want to make sure it's a private road, but it's also private property, okay. I just want to make sure we understood, you know, okay, yeah, because they're not going to be needing Gale Way for their development.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Their entrance does not come in off of Gale Way.
No, it comes in off of, uh, Warm Springs Drive and what, the other one on Buena Vista Boulevard? Yeah.
Okay, Todd, any other comments, Todd?
Well, that answers the questions that I had.
Perfect. Please remember to state your name for the record for the notes, thank you.
Uh, Reyna Gonzalez, we live on 217 East Gale Way, the 500 is right at our home, by our home. Uh, my question is, you are changing this, uh, from, uh, what is it? Conditional use permit to, uh, commercial. If I sell my home, in which way is going to affect me?
It's already commercial and has been for years. Yes, it's been commercial, I've worked here for 17 years and it's probably been commercial for 30 to 40 years already.
Why this is changing now?
We're not changing, it's just because certain uses that go on, on zone property, some of them require a conditional use permit, some of them don't. But anything on Buena Vista Boulevard, any development would require a conditional use permit, even if it was something you really wanted, like your favorite restaurant, they would be going through the same conditional use permit, so.
Okay, so how come they sell their houses, it's commercial and they get, uh, from the bank loans that are for residential?
Your home is residential, this is the. Your home is residential, this is the piece across the street is commercial.
Okay, my home is residential.
Here, I'll show you.
You are changing is that, that lot down there?
Yeah, the triangle's always been red, like this, this is the piece right here in red, your homes are all in the brown, which is a planned unit development residential, and it's been like this for twenty, thirty-plus years.
It's not going to affect us if I sell my home and the bank says, well, you have a commercial area, so we cannot give you a loan for.
No, when, when did you buy your home, just asking?
When?
When?
Two thousand and four.
Yeah, see, it would have been the same story then, if that would have been the case, they would have said, oh, we can't give you a loan because, because it's been the same.
And the reason I'm asking is because not far away from here on Buena Vista, uh, there are some trailers, and at one time, some relative was trying to buy one of those, and the bank said, no, because this is commercial. They wouldn't give them the loan.
Yeah, that sounds kind of strange to me, because.
That's what.
Because most trailer parks are in kind of a commercial residential mix kind of a thing, because you rent space from them, so they probably just didn't want a loan to them, so they told them that.
Another thing, the, the storage units are quite a few, what, eight hundred?
Eight hundred and eighty.
Eight hundred and eighty. Why did they allow to have storage units there when there is a residential, there is no infrastructure? The same way that you have homes, and then you build condominiums and apartments, there is something in between, but this is from residential to commercial property, another type of commercial, but no, storage units.
So the way, the way our zoning works in Washington City and Utah law is a city, the city council and the planning commissioner are required to do general plans, and then adopt zoning plans, and then designate the land zones according to those plans. So that's where Drew is saying, for decades, this piece has been zoned commercial. But that doesn't mean it's approved for any use at this point, the owner would need to bring it to the city with a proposed use, and that proposed use can fit into three categories, either a permitted use, which means that the use that was proposed, if it's permitted, it's essentially allowed, subject to staff and the council and commission's review of the actual project. So there's first, a permitted use within a zone, second is a conditional use, which is a use that may be applied for, but is reviewed based on the conditions within the area. The third would be a, a use that is not permitted nor conditional, staff would turn that away on at the time they showed up, but anything that's within permitted or conditional, the city has a process to allow folks with their property rights to present an application and send it to the planning commission or city council for consideration. And so, that lot has been zoned commercial long before you bought your house. The banks would have been aware of that when you bought your house, the difference is if this application gets approved, there would now be a commercial use on the lot, but the zoning would still be identical to what it has been.
So it will not affect if I want to sell my home?
I don't know.
Hopefully.
We don't get to tell banks how to make their lending decisions, so I don't know, I, I don't, I'm not going to tell you it won't. I've never seen a bank say, you know, this was zoned commercial, and now it's being used commercial, so we're going to stop lending, I've never seen a bank do that.
Well, that was the wrong decision to approve for.
Todd Alford again, sounds like you're not going to move that, or suggest moving that sign to that corner, with this, uh, map that's up, you can see if you did that proposed, it's getting it closer to those apartments or condos, I'm not sure what they are. And that would really be.
Yeah.
A big white.
I don't know, Todd, I haven't, I don't think any of us have said we're not interested in moving, or talking about that sign that, what you just said you've heard, we haven't, I haven't said anything, I think the sign should stay, so. I don't think that that's any different than what you're suggesting, so.
Right, it didn't, you know, the other maps that you had did not show those, uh, those buildings there, and you can see if that happened, you know, that would really be lighting somebody's front window.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak to this topic before we close the public hearing? At this time, Commissioners, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing. I'm sorry, was there somebody online that had a comment for the public hearing?
I was just going to say, sorry, this is Braden Saunders with Yasko again, um. I, I just wanted to point out that the, the conditional use is for the, the storage unit place, that the billboard, you know, it's being, yes, it's being moved because there's, there's our, our partners on the property are wanting to develop, develop it and put this building there, but, um, I, I mean, I just, I just would like the planning commission to be aware that it's a separate issue, and, and I, I would hope that they, um, you know, can, can distinguish the two and be able to, to make the decision for the storage units based on, you know, the plan the storage units have. Uh, that, that was all I was going to say, um, uh, thank you.
Thanks, Braden. At this time, I'll look for a motion from the Commissioners to close the public hearing.
This, Jill, I propose we close the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Willock, I'll second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed at this time.
Commissioner Hanson, if I may, just a quick legal moment, first, just recognition that Commissioner, Commissioner Musso has arrived. I've talked with he and Commissioner Tupoe, Commissioner Tupoe will remain to vote on this issue since she's been present for all the discussion. Um, and secondly, one of my goals has been to provide some training, because we've got three conditional use permit applications tonight, I just wanted to review Washington City Code about planning commission consideration of um, conditional use permits, and just, I want to be real quick, but this is in section nine dash seventeen dash five subsection three. The entire section basically says the planning commission can approve, modify, or reject a conditional use permit. Um, and then subsection three reads as follows. The planning commission shall not authorize a conditional use permit unless evidence is presented showing A, the proposed use at the particular location is necessary or desirable to provide a service or facility which will contribute to the general well-being of the neighborhood and community, and B, that such use will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity, or injurious to property or improvement in the vicinity, and C, the proposed use will comply with regulations and conditions specified in this title for such use, and D, the proposed use will conform to the intent of the general plan. So two of those are fairly technical, staff have reviewed and, you know, confirmed that it isn't violative of those, but two of those are squarely in the camp of the legislative body, which is to make decisions about the conditional nature and the impact it'll have there. And so that's, that's where your discretion gets to, gets to be expressed as it relates to the application. But I wanted to express, just kind of train on that provision, not targeted at this one issue, but because you've got three tonight, and because one of my goals is to implement some training is, as we progress.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate it, at this time, the public comment is closed, and I'm going to open the floor for Commissioners to participate in additional questions or concerns with staff, or either Ken on the phone, or Braden, who is also on the phone as well. Braden, you were the one that was here last time and spoke to us, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That was me.
All right, thank you. Well, Commissioners, I, let me think how to say this, I want to see a, I want to see a product built around the sign, I don't feel comfortable moving the sign, I don't know, it sounds to me like we're not supposed to be talking about the sign, looking at this project right here with the sign being moved, I have some concerns about that. If the project is built around the sign, we don't have to, I don't feel like I need to address the sign, the sign's there, it's going to stay there, uh, we're not moving it, we're not doing anything about it, I would have liked to have seen the project built around the sign. If there's a project that can be built around a sign, I would say storage units would fall within one, two, or three of, you were going to put those in order. I thought that's what I was going to see, so I'm disappointed in not seeing that, that's my feeling on this, happy to entertain everybody else's feeling, that's just how I feel about it.
This is Commissioner Tupoe, I think when we first, um, considered moving the sign, it didn't require notice to the neighboring residences, and so we wanted to see this, to see how the sign would be moved, and we were told that, um, that this project would be built around the sign, and.
Oh, it looks like it's not. They would look at designing it around there, they didn't say it would be, but I agree with, I agree with you, I think, you know, they may lose a unit or two, but if it's just a pole, uh, it seems to me like they could build around that, and and it's still going to be higher than the building, so.
Drew, this is Commissioner Anderson, how, is, are there setback requirements for that, for that billboard with their structure, and so what are they?
And I don't know what the easements would be for that.
Yeah, they're within it, either one, you know, in the red rectangle or the blue rectangle, they're definitely off of where they need to be.
But no, I, I'm talking about the building itself, so let's say that, that the, that the sign stays where it currently is, how far away from the sign do they need to redesign their building? Like, what's the setback?
Where can they build around it? It's funky, I've seen.
Yeah, could they, you know, probably, because, you know, I stayed in the Holiday Inn Express and I was an engineer, because if you ask an engineer, and it's nothing that, they'll tell you, they, they probably could make that, that happen, but again, I'm going to go back to what I told you probably about twenty minutes or half an hour ago, the look, please don't go there, because I guarantee you, you will go, why did I think that and do that? If I'm going to try to build it, you know, or have the building right around it like that, or part of it, you'll have this billboard sitting on top of.
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting they wrap it, I'm just, I'm just saying, if they leave the billboard where it is.
Probably want a minimum of ten feet.
Okay, that's what, like, how far would it scrunch down, that's what I'm wondering.
I'd want it to be at least that, you know, and again, if I'm bringing that building right up underneath there, I'm worried about the aesthetics of it.
If what he said is true, and again, we don't have the exact, but if what he said is true, that it's right there at the edge of the building in their parking lots, then in that case, they would lose about ten feet or so. You know, if, if it's further in than he said, then I guess they lose more than that.
I would, this Commissioner Hanson, I would have no problem if they take some of the units and put them where the proposed sign is on that pitcher, and they're on the right-hand side when you come in, I, I have no problem with that at all, I don't, if they could, and if they can't, that's, I just, I don't have a problem with the project, but I have a problem with the project not showing where the sign is and not building around it, and that's what I'm not comfortable with. I'm not in favor of moving the sign, I'm in favor of seeing a project that's built around the sign that's currently there.
So this is Commissioner Anderson, I, I wanted to go through a few thoughts, um, I, like Commissioner Tupoe said, I wanted those of you that are here tonight to know that one of the big reasons why we postponed this at the last meeting with the sign and everything, is we wanted to make sure that residents that lived here were noticed and, and had an opportunity to come and speak, because nobody showed up at the last meeting, so we did that. No, I, I know, I, that's why I'm saying, that's why we postponed it, is to make sure you guys were made aware. So, um, a couple things, though. So, I mean, with, with Gale Road being a private road, they've got it designed with no entrances or exits off of Gale Road, so it's not really pertaining here. The, the design of the sign, and they had talked about this last time when they were talking about the sign, I don't know if they're still proposing or not, but because one of the concerns were, were, you know, the amount of light and so forth that comes off of the sign, at the last meeting, they did propose an alternate design where it was a V-shaped sign, so the light is directed away from the homes in your community and out towards Buena Vista. I don't know if that's still the design they were looking at, but that is what they had proposed last time to try and reduce the amount of light that, so that way you guys don't see direct lighting, it's, you see the back of the sign, I, I think that would be preferable. One of the things that, that's hard here is that, like they had said, is that, that this, this has been zoned commercial for a long, long time, maybe even before your homes were built, and, and it's likely always going to stay commercial, and so there are certain things that can be built there, you know, storage facility is one of them, I mean, what, Drew, what are some, what are some examples of things that could be theoretically built there?
You want me to give the horror ones, or the?
Just, just in general, yeah, well, what, what are?
Let's take the, the worst-case scenario, you put a Maverick or a gas station there with lights and, you know, going all the time, um, you know, which I don't think they would want that either there, I guarantee it, but, um, but, but almost any, any retail store, any kind of a restaurant could go in there, um, you know, if, if the lot was big enough, a, a, you know, C two, everything would have to be kind of, I think, indoors, well, no, they could have some outdoors, so, you know, you had a mini Home Depot like the one in Santa Clara, maybe, I'm just throwing things out of, any retail could be in there, and those are the things those. Don't, don't bring up park, I promise you, unless you want to buy the lot, they'll sell you the lot at a, a really good price, and then you can build the park, but that's, because I, I only say that, we hear that every time, you know, it's like, yeah, park would be perfect, but they're, you know, they didn't pay probably a third of a million to build you a park, so, um, but in almost anything, anything retail that you could think of could, could pop in there, you know, a, a, a car dealership. Yeah, almost, you know, anything, so, that, that's retail in, in nature. A swig, a fizz.
Okay, so, so this is Commissioner, and I guess I'll, and this is a little bit rhetorical, but to, to those of you here, based on that, um, you know, would, would a storage facility be, be more or less of a nuisance in your community than, say, a Maverick or a swig or a restaurant or a whatever, less, right? So, so my, my point being is that this is commercial, and it's going to become something, and so a storage facility is probably less traffic and less of a nuisance than other things, if, if we deny this, you know, they may come back and, you know, put something outside of it that you really dislike, so that's, that's the alternative. As far as landscape maintenance, you guys talked about, you know, trees and so forth, I would, I would imagine that you guys would appreciate having the bigger, you know, more landscaping, so it's less of a nuisance, um, but it's their property, I mean, they're going to have to maintain it, and so forth, it's not going to be something you guys have to do. I do think that, I, I still don't like the, the sign moved up further, closer homes, I mean, is it more or less a nuisance? You know, it's hard to say, I think if it's a V shape, I think it'll be less of a nuisance than it currently is, um, at least as far as the light, but I, I think for sure that the, and, and this is one thing I thought we would have at least, is that the privacy wall would go around the fence, and kind of block the backside of, of, or sorry, the privacy wall would go around the sign and block the backside of that sign, whereas right now, we've got landscaping, you know, blocking the, blocking the storage facility, you know, lots of good landscaping and wall and this and that, and then the sign is the only open spot on the whole thing, you know, I.
What's going to happen in that V, V area, is it just going to be weeds, or are they going to maintain that?
Well, they've got it just as like rock and.
Right.
Whatever, but I, I would think that, that that would be the area that you'd want to have more landscaping, not less, you know, more trees on the backside of that sign, and take your, your privacy wall around that sign, so it, so then it is less of a nuisance, and if you had a V-shaped sign that directed light outward, you had the privacy wall going behind that sign, maybe even eight feet, at least at that, you know, that higher portion, you know, something to, and more, and, and extend the trees and stuff up there, I think that helps with it.
Yeah, let's be careful about putting trees under a billboard, because trees tend to go, grow upward, and so it'd just be a, kind of a nuisance to put trees underneath a billboard.
Yeah, I'm not saying underneath, I'm just saying.
But I just want to make, you know, the comments that have kind of, it's all landscape, it's going to be a crushed rock triangle area, it's not just left naturally, like, some like to call it natural finish, yeah.
Thanks, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioners, do you have any other, uh, comments or questions for staff?
This is Commissioner Musso, so. I'm not going to vote on this, but I just have a couple of questions to ask, so there's going to be eight hundred and eighty units in this thing?
Yeah, stacked, multiple stories.
It's like a walkout lot, and so like, it's one level, these are one level, like, these are.
So these are all going to be, they're all.
They're conditioned, they're indoor. They're conditioned. They're indoor, except, except for the few that are out. See, Brian, that's why you're not allowed to come late because then I have to show you. No, I'm just kidding.
No, 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 no.
I'll show you the few outdoor ones here.
I saw the elevations. I was trying to understand what they were.
Yeah, these roll-up doors are the outdoor. Everything else is inside, conditioned, yeah.
So from Buena Vista on the road, about how far above Buena Vista Road is this building gonna be? So 20 feet? Are you gonna have two stories above Buena Vista?
Well, three on the corner end, and you can see it tapers because the elevation of the road climbs.
Okay, so it's 35.
So you're three stories on this. When you get to the other end of it down Buena Vista, it's two-story.
Okay, so it's gonna be a fairly large facility. So for, and it's not a bad-looking building. I, I agree with that. I guess the, the advantage to kind of this for, for you folks who are here is that that's gonna act as a major noise block for you also.
Off the highway?
You know, that'll be, because I've been on Gale Road a lot and that sucker, you can hear the trucks. Yeah, so this'll, this'll act as a major, as a major noise barrier for you, which is, which is an advantage too. So I'm just, I'm surprised at the number of units. They're all tiny.
Go from 10 to 30 by five-by-fives and everything in between.
Yeah. You can't put a lot of crap in a five-by-five.
You ought to see my closet at home.
Well, I think, this is Commissioner Hanson, and Drew and Eldon add to all this if you want, but the way I look at this is we're supposed to recommend or not recommend to city council the design.
This is yours. This is all you. Not you specifically, I mean, your group.
I, I will tell you that, that, uh, storage units do a lot of due diligence before they pull the trigger on where they're gonna go. They do a, a major study and they know that this is gonna be successful for them. They're not looking to throw money away. They do a lot of work. And, I mean, that's, that's kind of what I do is I sell ground and, and I know the kind of work that they put in for opportunities for them. So, uh, this, this will be a successful as far as, you know, what, what they're hearing from the studies that they've done.
So the agenda item tonight is for a conditional use that was, that's asking this, this body to approve the conditional use of storage units together with the plan. Now, there's kind of two layers because this body's had the hearing as to the moving of the billboard. And while the decision tonight is not whether or not to allow the billboard to be moved, I think the, the movement of the billboard can be one of the factors that you consider when you decide whether this conditional use is good for the community and the health and safety and general welfare of the surrounding properties. Because that is one of the factors, that's one of the details that's shown in their proposal, right? Now, that would be a separate agenda item and a separate vote of the body, which not, isn't on your agenda tonight as to whether or not to move the sign. Would still need to be voted upon. But the proposal, because it shows that, can, you can take that into consideration as you consider whether this conditional use is a good fit for this piece of property.
Well, I mean, if we approve this as conditional use, they'd have to get approval to move the sign to be able to build this design. Unless they amend this design. Because your current sign is in the, in the way of the building.
So, yeah, I mean, you, if you can, if you, if you approve this conditional use, you're essentially approving the relocation of the billboard to that location, even though that would need to be a subsequent vote.
Yeah, and that's kind of how we left it in their last meeting. They said, we're gonna wait and when the conditional use permit comes in, then we'll. So I think they, they, they covered it, I think, well enough to do that. Yeah, just to add on to that.
Your agenda doesn't include that as the vote tonight. And so really, the vote would be, are, is this lot of commercially zoned land appropriate for the conditional use, which is designated for that zone of storage units as presented by the plan tonight? And the plan, of course, shows the billboard being moved in the direction that it's going. And so, yeah, you can take that sign into consideration, but your vote isn't, should we move the sign? The vote is, should we approve this zoning application that's going to move the sign?
So I'm, I'm, this is Commissioner Hanson. I'm in conflict. I don't have an issue in favor of, um, storage units at this location. I am opposed to the design that I'm looking at on the screen.
Then you should probably say, deny, bring back another application that doesn't move the sign, right? So, so you need to, you need to make a decision tonight.
Or table, I think they could table and ask for an alternative and everybody here would know the date we're gonna do that. I think that would be, I think the best thing instead of running through the whole thing, I think we could go ahead and table and ask if they, you know, the applicant to bring you back something. But if, yeah.
But the point is correct. If you approve this as it's reflected, you're gonna have a billboard, you know, relocation application and, and they're gonna tell you, look, you told us we could do all of this. You, you vested us with, with the conditional use approval. But now you're not letting us move the billboard, right? And so this is the time to take that into consideration.
Drew, I have another question regarding the building. Is this, where this is an air conditioning unit, are they gonna have AC units on top? And if that's the case, are they gonna have a parapet to cover the AC units so that you can't see them? Where are the AC units going? Because they said it's an AC unit. So if the 35s to the top of the building is at the top of the parapet and that's gonna shorten all the walls inside, or are they gonna ask for, to be eight to 10 feet taller for a parapet to cover the HVAC units? Or are they indoor units? How, how's that gonna work?
I'm hoping what we've been shown, but I'm gonna ask Ken. Ken, it's Ken's building. Ben, uh, Ken, does your elevations include any roof-mounted stuff?
Our elevations do not. They do include some parapets. But if we are required to, if we're required to stay within the 35 feet to cover or screen rooftop units, then yes, we would put the AC units inside. We would use, you know, furnace systems or ceiling mount units and not put any equipment on the roof. If any equipment ends up being on the roof, it would be below the 35 feet or, you know, max out at 35 feet.
We're actually allowed to go a little higher in our commercial zones now than 35, so.
Yeah, that's what, whatever you would allow, we would make it fit. We do both. We use rooftop units for the upper floor and, and then the lower floors, we use furnace, you know, split AC systems. But, yeah, we wouldn't, if the equipment does go on the roof, it's not very tall, ends up being about three feet tall at the, at the most. So.
So you'd be 30, 38 feet max. Um, what, what would, what would you screen those with? What kind of material? Because they, any roof-mounted equipment in, in the city has to be screened. So, uh, do you have any of these products you could put up there that your building's already using? Because we would want to know what that screening would be.
We would screen it with the same material, like architectural metal or whatever's on the exterior of the building. We would use the same products and screen it with that. Or, or typically if the building steps up higher in any areas, we would put the equipment in those areas. But, yeah, we, yeah, architectural metal paneling or things like that, yeah.
Yeah, that's why we just want to clear that. Also, while, while we're here, commissioners, you talked about putting the, you know, but I just drew this out here because remember the fencing in the block wall is right here. It doesn't come down to here.
I think the block wall, it's just the gate.
The gate's up here now. And that's what I was just pointing is that, so the, the block wall's gonna end right here anyway. I mean, if they extend it over here, you're, I mean, all you're doing is, I, I don't see it gaining too much, you know, unless they, it's, you know, and I know that Yescow probably doesn't want it behind the fence as much as possible in case they have to get up and work on it. And if they can't get in.
Well, you can have the gate and where it is, and you can take the privacy wall over further into the triangle and then bring it down. So it, so it screens that gate or screens the.
You're saying like bring a wall like this out in the middle of nowhere?
Exactly. And then just continue your landscaping behind it.
Yeah. We're, we're open to that. If, if it meets the easement requirements of the fence company, we're open to extending that if that's one of the conditions.
All right, commissioners, you gotta let your opinion be known before we take a vote on this.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I, I think that this is a better use than, than the alternatives in the area. I think it, it has less traffic impact than other commercial uses, and I think it screens the traffic from the community. They've got a, a 20-foot landscape buffer. I think the privacy wall should probably be eight feet possibly. And the, the cost difference in a six-foot wall and an eight-foot wall is not that much. I think the wall needs to extend like we just talked about behind the sign. And my, my worry if we, if we, if we make them shrink the building, we don't move the sign, is that, that the sign won't get changed. And I think one of the benefits of having it moved is that they'll, is that, you know, like they talked about last time, we can have them do the V-shaped design where, where that light pollution gets directed out to Buena Vista rather than back into the community. I think if we, if we let the sign be, be moved, we can go the V-shape, we can direct light away, we can have a privacy wall behind it and extend those trees, you know, behind it into that, into that triangle area. And I think we get a better effect than if they shrink the whole building down and we just leave the, the sign where it's at. Yeah, we can. And they already said that they were planning to.
So one of the, one of the city code provisions for non-conforming signs is when they make a change, they have to come into confirmation with the existing code. So if they, if, if the least leverage we have is if they just leave it right there and operate it as is, right? But if they want to move it, we get to require that they come into confirmation with all of our sign provisions. And so, so, yeah, we, we can. Now, one of the problems is we wouldn't allow them to build a new sign at that location today. And so they may not be able to come into confirmation in any way because that location itself wouldn't be permitted for a new sign, right? And so we've got a little bit of this legal non-conforming in the location it's at. They're wanting to move it. Code says we've gotta, we, we get to require them to bring it up to code, but that location isn't, isn't up to code, right? And, and so you're still allowing some form of a, of a, of an allowance there. Um, and again, it's, it's within, it's within this body's authority to, to, to consider these things. But yeah, that, that location isn't, wouldn't be allowed for a sign today, even if it was, you know, baffled and veed or whatever they were gonna do. So billboard signs are a highly regulated area where local governments become very involved and um, there's, there's a lot of reasons for it. But, but yeah, we've got a lot of, a lot of code on it from the state and the local level. There's just a lot of law and it's probably one of those areas that's gonna continue. The law will continue to change as signs become more and more technological, right? And, and are become able to do, just, a billboard today isn't what it used to be. And probably a billboard in 20 years won't be what we know it to be today. And so, yeah, the law will, the law will keep changing.
So basically what you just said is that they can't move the sign. I mean, cutting through all of the legalese that you just mentioned, right?
I'm the attorney. I'm not the commission member. But, but yeah, well, they've got a legal non-conforming sign where it sits today.
Right. So, but, but.
And our code says that if they're gonna move it to a new location.
It has to be within legal.
We can require that they bring it up to code. Yeah.
But bringing it up to code, you can't go there. But we can, we can make an exception, correct?
Well, you can, you can attempt to make an exception, yeah. Again, but again, tonight, well, well, tonight your decision, tonight your decision isn't moving the sign, right? So when that agenda item comes, you would look at all of the particulars of what to do with the legal non-conforming sign and its relocation. Tonight, you're looking at a request for zoning to allow.
They go kind of hand in hand.
Absolutely.
Works for us and hopefully for everyone else too. But I mean, if we do move it, if we let it move, then we're not in compliance. Therefore, we get in trouble, correct?
There's an appeal that somebody could choose to appeal and, and seek an overturn. Yeah.
If we approve this tonight, is that approving that the sign is moved?
No, that, that has to be an actual agenda item in action that this commission hears. But, but, but yeah, because the, the, the proposal tonight is saying the sign will be moved over there and you're talking about where the wall will go around it and how the landscaping. I, I think that implicitly you're saying that you're gonna approve their sign removal agenda item when it comes up.
Yeah, because it wouldn't make any sense to approve the building like it is and then they come back and say, now we're letting you move your sign, but you can go bed. You know, I mean, that would just be a big brother teasing his little brother just so, so mean.
What I'm thinking about additional is if the sign was moved, then it opens up for legal liability for that sign to come down then. Because if residents, they have a legal argument to have it taken down.
That sign could, that sign location could be challenged, yeah.
That's why I go back to why I can't understand why I'm gonna vote any other way.
They gotta redo the building.
As a commission, I, I don't know, I can't, I'm the chair. I can't really make a suggestion, I don't think, but I know exactly what I would do.
You can make motions, sure.
Well, I think what I would do is send this, table it and have them redesign it with the sign as in place. Because otherwise, I, I'll say it, I'll say it legally, I'll say it from the podium. If this sign moves, that opens up a legal representation from people in this commu, in this community nearby to have that taken down. If I was the owner, I wouldn't want that argument. I wouldn't want that fight in court to have to go and argue. And as the chair of the planning commission, that's why I'm staying, I think the sign is there. They knew it was there and they built and bought their homes. If we don't move that sign, we don't have a sign issue. And everybody else is gonna be okay. I, I like the design. If it's all about, I like the whole storage unit. I like everything about it. But I don't like the whole sign thing. And that's why I'm like, we're gonna need to fix it to where it goes around the sign and we don't have to worry about the sign. It's not an issue. That's.
Commissioners, if I may just read you something that you did in August. This is your, this is your decision. No, this is the planning commission. Commissioner Musso motioned to approve the non-conforming sign relocation on the condition that the future conditional use permit is approved. And it was seconded by Commissioner Anderson and passed unanimously. So that means that you approve for the sign to be moved on the approval of a conditional use permit.
Right, but that's before we knew that it couldn't be moved. I mean, because we never had a legal opinion.
For me, if you don't mind, Drew. For me, that's exactly right. I remember exactly the same way. And what I wanted to see from my vote on that was, my expectation is that they were gonna build around the sign. And that they could move it, yes, but I wanted to see something, at least I remember in all my comments and thoughts that night, I wanted to see him come back with something around the sign. That's what I thought.
Well, that's why I'm just letting you know what, kind of what your motion said, but, you know, again, it hinges on your approval of the CUP. That's what the, that, that's the crux of it. That, that's your hinge point, right? So you can.
That we were gonna move around the sign, design around the sign? I don't ever remember that. Or we would have designed around the sign. Yeah, if I could, I, I might be able to shed some light on.
Gentlemen, this is Commissioner Hanson. Hold on a second. Uh, I have a difference of opinion to that last comment because as the commissioner at that time, I absolutely remember um, wanting to see a design built around the sign.
I, so, so what I, uh, this is, if it's okay, maybe I can shed some light on, on, on this. The mechanism that, that would be available to you guys and to us as the billboard company and consequently our, our landowner applying for the use is, is a provision in state code that allows us to relocate a sign up to a mile in a commercial zone. So even though that it's a non-conforming sign in yours, in your code currently, there's a, there's a provision in state code that we could use that would allow for the sign to be relocated legally. And when we applied for it, what we had said is, yeah, we were applying to move the sign up to this location. That was, that was the whole purpose of the application. And, and with the upgraded structure so that it was a V-shaped, which is also a provision. which is also a provision in state code that can be used in this instance to, to help alleviate this, this issue. Um, the, the V-structure was proposed with the idea that, um, you know, we'd be able to better angle the light away from the houses. Um, it's not gonna fix it completely, but it's, it's, it's a mechanism we have to help it. So that was, I guess, more or less, uh, I guess, kinda the, the purpose of the application was to move it on the property. And in our application, we specified it would probably be needed to use, uh, uh, provision in state code to do that. So I just wanted to make you aware, I know people don't really read billboard law for fun. So, uh, I'd be happy to explain that more too if, if needed.
So my memory of your hearing was the applicant said, look, we're the billboard company. We have a contract provision that says we should be reasonable and trying to help the landowner move this if they want to. The landowners told us that they want to, so we're here trying to be reasonable. We suggest that it be moved over here. And, and that was the.
Yeah.
Quick summary of how the, the billboard representative presented their application. And so it was, it was a, if I remember right, it was a, you know, we don't, we don't need to move this, we don't have to move this. We're just trying to be reasonable underneath the contract. And.
So, so we, we have a provision in our contract. We wanna be a good tenant, obviously, to our new, our new owner of the property. But, but I think maybe, I mean, not to disagree, but there is a, a right, I guess, if, if you will, for the billboard to be moved. I, as the billboard owner, have a right to protect that, that property. And this, this seems like a way that would be able to, to satisfy everybody's, uh, concerns and make it a win-win win.
This is Commissioner Hanson again. Thad, I'll look to you on that. I don't think that they have a right to move the sign against city code, correct? I don't, I feel like somebody's telling me right now that they have a right to move this sign if they want to, and I'm out ready to say no.
So, so you need more detail than just a right to move the sign. Is there a right to move billboards? Sure. But city code says we're not gonna have them any closer than three hundred feet along certain corridors. Like, there's a lot of different restrictions that come into play. And so is there a right to move a billboard? Yes. Is there a right to move it wherever you want, however you want? Absolutely not. There's, there's various other restrictions, both within city code and state law, that govern where and how you can move your billboard. You know, and.
I, I agree one hundred percent. I, I, that, that is a hundred percent accurate, but I do think that in this specific instance, we check all the boxes. And I'd be, and I, again, I'd be happy to sit down and show you exactly how and, and, and why as well.
Brayden, this is Commissioner Hanson. The way I remember your discussion with us last time is it didn't matter to you one way or the other if the sign was gonna be moved or not. And I remember discussions surrounding, let's see, let's see what it looks like designing something around the sign. If I'm wrong, I'll accept it. That's what I remember.
No, no, you're not, you're not, you're not completely wrong. I, my, my, my personal preference would be to leave the sign as is. Uh, it's easier on, it's easier on us, the sign's there, everybody does it great. But this is an opportunity to allow for the development of the property. Um, and make sure, you know, every, everybody's whole in that, that, uh, transaction. So, um, yes, my preference, of course, is to not move it, it's easier. But, uh, given the situation and the opportunity, um, I, I believe there's an avenue forward, provided us to do that.
One of the things that is not being taken into consideration here is this is, with what you said, I agree with it, but it's to the detriment to the residents that live nearby.
Well, and, and again, this kinda goes back, the sign's been there for decades. Like, the sign was there before everything else was.
Exactly.
So, so, yeah, I, I guess that would be my answer to that.
So one, can I make a comment? This is Ken Menlove. Um, if we were to try to redesign around the sign, which we were never, you know, instructed to do that, so we've spent thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars designing it the way it is now. But if we were to design around the sign existing, um, to keep the same number of storage units, to make the project financially feasible for the owners, the developer, we would probably have to cut the building back. The, the aisleways can't change very much, so we'd probably have to go to three stories in that, on that end there, make that a three-level building to maintain the same number of storage units or rentable units to make the project pencil. So we would definitely be thirty-five or thirty-eight feet on that end, um, and leave the sign where it was at. We would leave the drive approach where it is and the access where it is. Um, but we would definitely go to three stories on that end. So it would make the building taller on that end, you know, blocking the view of the residents and all that. So, um, the question is whether that's feasible.
And then to piggyback on that, it kinda goes, and I'm not a, a city planner, but it kinda goes back to, I mean, you, you guys have said that the building as designed looks good. Um, I think, and again, I know I'm the billboard guy, but I really think the aesthetics of it look the best with what's proposed.
Mm-hmm. Again, you're not taking into consideration the detriment to the residents.
So I, I think what was just said is if they were to try and modify to keep it where it is, they would be taller buildings and more, more intrusive. And again, that's right in your camp of deciding, is this in the best interest of the location? And so, and so if a project has to be that high just to pencil to work around the billboard that you're not comfortable moving, then, then you could, you could exercise the discretion as a, as part of the legislative body here. Maybe it's not, maybe it is detrimental to, to the neighbors, right? And so these are all the factors. This is why you wanted to see the plan before you, before your decision on the sign movement would, would become, you know, dried ink.
So again, this is Commissioner Anderson, I'll just, now that we've gone totally sideways on this issue. Um, I think that, again, I'll go back to the issue of, I think this is still the best use for, for the piece of property that has the least amount of nuisance for the residents. It, we, we've talked about a, you know, potential to amend the sign that reduces light pollution, put a wall, you know, that, that reduces sight of the sign, landscaping. I mean, and, and, and they're right, there is no, I mean, looking at this, there, there's no logical way to be able to, to do this out and around because you, you got certain setbacks for your entries, your exits. That, that corner is not usable by any means. So the only way you could do it is for them to shrink the building and then they would have to look, like you said, they'd have to look at their costs and, you know, so, so either, either we table it and they come back with a design that is shorter and taller and then the sign stays as it is and there's more light pollution in the, with the residents. I mean, it stays as is, or we do this, but with that said, there's what, there's what Thad said too. And that, and that's a little bit of a, a sticky issue where, you know, if we approve something with, with the implicit understanding that, that we're letting them move the sign, but then we're not supposed to move the sign, that's a little bit, and again, that's, that's your realm, Thad, so you can delve in that one. But I, I, but I think that as far as what we're supposed to be looking at, you know, the best use of, of, of the land, the least amount of nuisance for the, for the owners. I think this project, if we have a few modifications, like a little bit taller wall, landscaping behind the, you know, into that corner and take the wall behind the sign and the sign's a V-shaped, I think that is in the best use or the best interest of the residents, given this, given the options.
And just where you're wondering what Drew's doing, I just even, it's just a thought even to push it toward a street a little bit more. Um, possibly, that's why I just kinda moved it maybe twenty feet, bring it out there, it's still on the property. And because of the height, I'm not worried about any sight distance cuz it's above that. I mean, even though it's going into that triangle, but that's, I'm just throwing it out for food of thought and to chew on a little bit. So you could add anywhere from fifteen, twenty feet to where it's only being moved, you know, yeah, it's over here, but it's, it's there anyway. You know, I mean, that's why I'll always go back, the sign's there, people are seeing it, yeah. Now it's, you know, when the one person, it's in front of their view now, they're gonna have a more clear view. The guy down the street's gonna end up with what his neighbor had the last X amount of years by seeing this pole and, and, and the sign.
So Drew, this is off topic, um, well, not really. The, is there a power transmission line that comes down there or does it come down Main Street? I can't remember. I know there's some overhead power lines somewhere that come down there. I'm not sure where they are.
I think they're out on the other side, in fact, you can see them right there.
Okay, okay, I, I was just wanting, if we do move it, it's not.
The lower power line, so there's nothing, okay, I'm aware of in this area. And hopefully, you know, even my proposal there keeps it the ten-foot out of the PUE on the street, you know, side there too.
So would you be hanging over by, by doing that? Would you be?
Not, you wouldn't be hanging over the property line at all.
How close would you be to the property line?
I would tell them I'd wanna keep the edge of the sign six feet off the property line cuz that's kinda where my setbacks are for certain signs, et cetera, six feet off. So, you know, but right now they're at twenty, so that's what I'm saying, if they push it down X, they're gonna, you know, move it fourteen feet maybe and, and keeping the six, but again, at the angle, it's hard to, you know, my geometry isn't working real good.
It would look, it'd be going.
And the V-shape would help a lot.
This, this is Shill. I, I agree with Anderson that it is the best use for this property. I think it's a good use. Uh, and we're here to recommend a conditional use permit. Yeah, why not approve it? If they take the sign down, uh, they may not get it back, according to attorney, so.
Well, yeah, yeah, someone would have to appeal the decision.
Oh, I, I say move forward, keep going down the road and.
And then are we in trouble?
Shoot at that duck.
You don't get in trouble, but if you get appealed and overturned, you, your, your decision is, you know, reversed.
I think if we make our best effort to deal with a sticky situation, and that's all we can do.
All we can do. I'll make that motion.
Make a motion and.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to approve C dash twenty-one dash twelve, request for a conditional use permit for a storage unit facility. Business within a commercial zone parcel located at two twenty-five East Buena Vista Boulevard. With the four findings of staff and the nine conditions outlined by staff, with an additional condition, ten, that the, the privacy wall be eight feet instead of six feet and that it extend, um, into the triangle area past the sign as a, as a visual buffer for the sign. Um, condition eleven, that the sign, if, if the sign is relocated, that it, that is V-shaped, as was previously discussed, I know, that, that's why I said if it's relocated. And that the proposed location be closer to the street, um, as, as Drew has shown.
Sign location.
And then condition twelve, that, that the, the landscaping and trees continue into the triangle area as a buffer zone to, um, to that area in particular, to the sign.
This is Shill, I'd second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, I've got a second by Commissioner Shill. On item number six A, it'll go to individual voting. Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Shill?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Tupoe?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm a nay as well. The motion passes three to two. Anything else we need to say about six A, Drew? Or is that enough said? It passes.
Yeah, he's added the conditions, you took your vote, three to two, that's kind of it, so.
Okay. Move to item number six B. This is also a public hearing for a conditional use permit, C dash twenty-one dash thirteen, for an existing wireless facility located at the east end of seven hundred north, four hundred east along I fifteen. The applicant is Dish Wireless. Open it up for staff for their report.
Applicant's request an approval, condition a use permit, or at least an update to a currently existing one of the current, um, cell tower, and this is on city property. The upgrade consists of adding some new ground control boxes consisting of an equipment, uh, GPS unit and wiring bridge. Um, a new row of antenna arms, uh, consisting of three, and just so you're wondering what that might be, I'm gonna, that's what these are, is these antenna arms, so they're adding a new, a new layer up there. Um, plus the box is down below, so I'll just zoom in on here so we know where. And the new, um, the new row of antennas will be consistent of three new panels with associated wire connections for each new antenna. The attached exhibits show the size and location of the new items wishing to be established at the current site. Staff seeing no problem with the proposals, recommend an approval of the amendment to the current conditional use permit at this particular location, which is adding three antenna panels and control ground equipment, um, on the site. Staff therefore would like to recommend that the planning commission approve the C dash twenty-one dash thirteen, allowing for upgrades and additions to a cell tower facility currently located approximately seven hundred north, four hundred east on the city property, uh, which is our, basically our park's yard. And that's based on the findings and subject to the conditions in your report. And, uh, be glad to answer any questions you might have on this proposed updated CUP.
All right, Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments for staff.
Drew, this is the same as those other ones we've done, they're just adding three. It's not going any higher, it's the same, they're just adding, they're doing some stuff down at the bottom, so it's.
Yeah.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not like it's a new tower or anything, so.
No, they're just adding because it's actually a new company wants to, you know, co-locate. We, in, in fact, the states, all of us are encouraging co-location instead of keep building new towers. This kinda fits all those, those bubbles, just, you know, adding, again, it's this darkened area here. You know, so there's that gap already, here's the top of it, you know, in that row, and then you have the row down here, they're adding this. Where my little cursor is, that, I mean, it's got three, that's what you see off to the right-hand side, is the three different arms that come off. I wish I was more technically knowing what they call all the, I just call them arms and panels and antennas and so. But they're adding some equipment on the ground, a few, you know, and, uh, an electronic box, a bridge, and then a GPS control box as well down there.
I, I have no, I have no further questions. It's a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna open it up, we're gonna open it up right now for a public hearing, if there's anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak. It appears there is not. I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Commissioner Bullock, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a first and a second by Anderson to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Open the floor back up for any questions for staff.
This is Commissioner Anderson. So Thad, my, my only question is, on all the previously, previous ones on the findings, we had struck health from that just because we talked about the city, the planning commission doesn't have the expertise to determine that, but it does meet federal regulation. So I would just say we strike health from that and otherwise, I think it's fine.
Yes, it meets all federal regulations.
Yeah.
You, you can do that. Now, our code does say you shall not authorize a conditional use permit unless evidence is presented showing that it's necessary desirable for that location or that under the circumstances, it will not be detrimental to health, safety, or general welfare. And now you've taken an issue with that on all of the cell towers.
I, and I, again, I only do it because it's a big enough issue with enough people that I.
You get to vote your conscience.
I recognize that it beats all FCC requirements and I have no problem with that, but I don't think that we have the expertise to, to say one way or the other. And so I don't wanna be saying that, that's all.
Well, it sounds like you might have a belief as to health, and if you do, I mean, the, the code says one way or the other.
I, I personally don't, I just know there are enough people that do, and I don't feel like we have the expertise to, to make that judgment, that's all.
Yeah.
Just trying to be cognizant of other people's belief.
Any other comments, Commissioners? If not, I look for a motion on item six B.
This is Commissioner Musso, I make a motion that we approve item six B, C dash twenty-one dash thirteen, a request for a conditional use permit for an addition to the current cell. C dash 21 dash 13, a request for a conditional use permit for an addition to the current cell tower facility located at approximately 700 North, 400 East. And the applicant is Dish Wireless, with the findings and conditions outlined by staff in their report.
Can we strike health in condition two? Which is what we've done on every other one for the past six months.
So, okay, I amend my motion and and I'll restate it that with the findings and except for the word health in item number two and the two conditions. Okay, so noted.
Second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Musso. I've got a second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Shill?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Musso?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an aye as well. Item 6B passes, granted permit for the conditional use permit. Commissioner, is there any other items or things that need to be brought before the body at this time or staff? If not, I look for a motion to close the meeting.
Mr. Shill, I'd make that motion to close this meeting.
Second.
I've got a first by Commissioner Shill and second by Anderson, I think it was, to close the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nope.
Commission, meetings close. Thank you.